All right, we're ready to go at 6:30. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, bills and manifests are going around. Do we need a non-public session to start it off with? Nope, nope. Okay, then we'll move directly on to opening public comment. Anybody like to speak? That's it? No, nothing? Dave?
There's nothing on TV.
Not yet.
We have to get you out by a certain time.
Right. All right, going, going, gone. You all set, Gary? Sorry, I should've checked with you first. We good? All right. Um, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes from second.
Any, any comments on these?
Um, line 339. Business Administrator Marjorie Whitmore was finalizing the response to the budget, to budget committee member questions, or responses, either or, the or...
Was finalizing what?
Responses, probably.
Responses, probably, I guess. Either the response or responses, one or the other.
Okay.
It's all I had.
All in favor of approving minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Um, Business Administrators' Report is next on the agenda, but if, um, if there's no objection, I'd like to move the NSBA School Athletic Update forward so that we can have our athletic director tell us what's going on, and then he can leave if he wants to. So unless anyone has a problem with that, I'd like to jump right to there.
I'm getting that.
All right, you're in.
Turn this on a little?
Yeah.
Just a little.
Twenty cents?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty.
Thanks very much. My name is Mike Rieger. I'm the athletic director here at the school, and I also, uh, I'm here representing the NSBA, the Northwood Softball Baseball Association, and traditionally the, uh, Northwood Recreation Department. I work for them as well, so I sort of represent all the sports in town. Uh, so I was asked to come in and give a quick update on, on where we are and all those things. I'll start with the school. Um, just finished a great year. It was my first year as athletic director. Uh, I appreciate you guys hiring me back to do it again this year. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I, uh, I enjoyed it. I learned a lot. Um, and it was great to be involved in what's going on in the school. We had an excellent year, uh, from a success standpoint. Our girls' teams, uh, won a championship in soccer, which I had the opportunity to coach. We won a championship in basketball, and we ended up second place in softball. We lost in the championship game to Barrington. Very good program over there. So that was exciting year for them. Uh, the boys' teams, um, made the playoffs in two out of three of our seasons and competed well. Didn't get any championships, but had good years all around. And, uh, cross country, we had a lot of success in cross country individually and as a team. I think we ended up second in the, uh, Southeast League, uh, with expectations of a possible championship this year coming up. The cross country team has a lot of young, strong runners, so that's exciting. Um, for this upcoming year, we have hired coaches for, not officially, we've hired coaches for soccer, and, uh, we're hoping that you guys will approve them tonight. We've offered cook jobs, and we have, uh, our candidates coming back for cross country, just haven't had a chance to get them in to meet yet, so we'll be doing that in the coming days. They are, uh, they've already applied. They're on board. They're excited to come back, and they're excellent coaches. Um, going back to this year, academically, we had an excellent year for our athletes. Um, I was really proud of, um, a number of our teams that in the past have struggled to keep all the players on board the team throughout the season, uh, even some not being able to try out as a, as a result of academics. So, we had much improvement from the years prior, uh, where I was a coach, not an athletic director, but, but saw the challenges that that brings and the disappointment it brings to the kids. So, um, it's been a big focus. We talk about it a lot with the coaches. I talk about it a lot with the players, and we keep the momentum going for them so that they can, uh, realize their dreams a little bit and not end up getting pushed back when trouble arises academically. Um, in that vein, I would like to bring up that we've had some challenges with some of the policies, um, that are in, that we are currently using. Um, and the challenges aren't that we can't enforce them well because we've done a good job of staying with them. Um, for me, the challenges are possibility of, of some slight adjustments to make them better for the families, better for the teams, better for, for all the kids. Um, so, we did some review, uh, previously before this board and the last board. Keith was a part of that. Dave was a part of that. And I don't know if those reviews were ever brought forward or discussed in these committees, but, um, we, we came up with some good ideas that I would love it if you guys had an opportunity to bring those forward and review them, um, so that maybe we could implement some of those possible changes. Um, as far as, and that's it for, uh, for school ball. As far as the, any questions when it comes to what's going on with school, uh, sports, athletics?
I don't know. Should we just, uh, the NHSBA?
NSBA?
No, the New Hampshire School Board Association, so the NHSBA is actually reviewing all of our policies, um...
Our school's policies?
Our school policies, including our athletic ones.
Oh, okay.
So...
We'll wait to hear back from their review.
So that's where we're at with all of our policies. Um, so I don't want you to think that we are not looking at them, because we are, and it was actually something that caught Keith had brought up, because I'm part of the policy committee. Keith had brought up. So they are being looked at because we have this many policies, whereas we might only need this many policies. Um, so we actually, a few meetings ago, were spending money to have the NHSBA, um, look at those to make sure that we have them, the ones that we need and everything like that. So there is more to come.
Cool. Excellent. That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, moving on to NSBA activities, um, for those of you who don't know, the reason I'm often here to talk about that is because the NSBA, our baseball and softball organization, we play our games and, and practice our, you know, with our teams here on the school field. So we've had a longstanding relationship with the school, um, where we, you know, help each other out in that regard. Um, this year, the NSBA had made, has made some transition, uh, with who we are playing against. Uh, our baseball teams are playing in the Barrington League now, which doesn't really affect our fields as, uh, too much. We, we still play home games here. We still practice here. We just have different competition. Um, and that went very well, so I, I feel like we're gonna be joining them on a more regular basis. Um, NSBA continues to work hard on our fields down below to try to improve them and, and keep them up and maintain them as best we can. Um, this year, we upgraded the batting cage area. We fin- finalized the upgrade of the upper field, which was a very large investment that we, uh, we dug it up. We put in drainage so that the field would drain and we would have no dangerous runoff areas where we would have people falling and such, which was a problem in the past. So that went really well. It's grown in now and looking like it was before we started. So that's exciting. Um, we've completed the dugout project, which was something the NSBA paid for over the last handful of years. Those two dugouts that are down there were, were not here before. So that was a big deal, and that was a senior project of somebody at Co-Brown. Um, I reached out to Co-Brown today to, to let them know that we have other similar projects. We have senior project opportunities. We have community service opportunities here and with NSBA and with the school. So I'm gonna get listed on their, I don't know, their postings so that we can offer opportunities and maybe, uh, get some help with some of our projects from them.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Absolutely.
Has there been any consideration of putting up a fence behind, like extending from the dugout behind the first base, on the first base side of the upper field?
To extending that fence?
Or making a fence, you know, so the balls, overthrowing balls don't go down the hill and stuff like that, or?
This year, you probably noticed that we did some makeshift fencing on the lower field, uh, the orange, uh, snow fencing.
Yeah.
So that was, that was the first year we did that. It worked really well for the same exact reasons. Um, so we absolutely can do that in up, it's a cheap fix, um, and a simple fix, and probably would be appreciated by cross country as well because in the, the course kinda needs some direction in that space. Um, and being that it's not permanent, we can, it can be moved and, uh, you know, it'd be wooden stakes and fencing that just can be moved and adjusted.
Yeah, we'd probably get that donated, too. I know a few people who have said that they'd be willing to donate.
And, well, I have quite a bit left over from last year. NSBA, you know, most of that stuff you see down there, I pulled out of the woods. It was in the woods below there. Pulled it out this year, unraveled it. I was like, hey, this'll work. Bought, you know, another $25 worth and extended it. So we have some left over. We, uh, we can probably make that happen easily.
Yeah, I was just curious if it was...
It's a good idea. It's definitely a good idea. And, you know, these little fixes like that are simple and they make a big difference, so just keep those ideas coming and we can put them into place.
All right, thanks.
Absolutely.
I just, and I don't know enough about baseball or anything like that. My only concern would be, because you're talking the first, the first baseline there, which is making sure that it doesn't interfere with any of the PE classes at that time and stuff like that. I mean, I don't know if it will or not, if they even use it out there, or...
We put it halfway on the hill some, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Where it's not on either field, just in that generic...
Well, and where you say it's movable and stuff, and that's great, but I know that they, and I don't know exactly where you want it, but they do use that for sledding sometimes in the winter and stuff. So when you said it was movable, I was like, oh, that's great, but I just don't want it to interfere with PE.
I'm pretty sure we'll pull out before the winter comes. Like, I'll pull those stakes out that we have in there now.
Yeah.
Wrap them up and put them away. That way, they're still good to go next year. You leave them out there for the winter. They're, they're pretty much done for anyway. Um, and anything I do like that, I'll, I'll get Mr. Tom involved, get Ms. Young involved, and, and make sure they're comfortable with what we're gonna do before we do it, which is what we always have done.
Town, any town rec updates?
Um, I'm excited that there's been an offer extended to a new rec director. We've lost our last rec director, and, uh, waiting for background checks, and there'll be somebody new. I, not somebody I've met, but somebody that they've interviewed, and they're very excited about, a lot of experience, uh, in running rec departments, and I think someone that's moving to Northwood. So, um, looking forward to having some help. Moving on, but we'll be, um, you know, I'll be talking to, uh, Ms. Young, I'm talking to you soon about basketball, because, uh, much like our baseball, basketball, you know, the school's basketball court is our one basketball court in town. So with recreation and school, we share it to, to make it all work. So that's, that'll be coming up in the, in the coming months. It's amazing how, I mean, I'm almost ready to start soccer two months out, and then we gotta start playing basketball two months out. Um, I think that's it. If anybody has any other questions for me?
Any questions for Mike? Any additional questions?
Thank you for taking the time to come and update us.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
No problem at all. Thank you guys for doing what you do. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. All right, getting back on the agenda, we're gonna move to the Business Administrators' report.
Okay, the monthly financials are on pages 13 to 28. Um, unless I hear otherwise, I'll go through them very quickly and just hit some highlights, uh, to bring to your attention. These are probably 95 to 98 percent closed out. We're still waiting on some encumbrances that we've, we've gotta close out, but they're pretty close. Uh, at, at present time, we've got about 130,000, uh, in excess revenues, another $82, $8200 in food service and excess revenues for about $139,000 in, in excess revenues. Um, and then if you can look on page 14, you'll see your revenues. We've got $89,000 in unanticipated revenue. That's mostly the Health Trust refund that we received. Um, everything else there, you see cat aid and Medicaid reimbursements are, are up as well. So the, the reimbursements in the revenue report is, is, uh, is looking good. On page 15, one of 14. Um, and again, I'll just do some highlights. If you have any questions, jump in. Um, teacher salaries, we have $90,000 left. Again, that was hiring new staff and, and coming in under what we budgeted for. Um, a little bit down, you'll see health insurance, $71,000. That's due to staff changes, buyouts and, uh, insurance buyouts and that not to exceed number that we budgeted for last year. So we've got $71,000 there. On page 2, down in the right-hand corner, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to it as 2 of 14 through the rest of the budget. On page 2, uh, language arts textbooks, um, we overspent the budget by $66,000. Math textbooks right under that, $27,000. You remember, those were the approvals by the school board toward the end of last year.
We received everything that we were supposed to receive last meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. We've got most of it in. We're still, we're still checking things off and calling the company. Some of it isn't in yet, but, um, so we haven't paid the bill yet.
Have they been cooperative about sending the missing materials?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's, it, there's just a lag time. We'll get that in and clean it up as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Down a little further on that page, you'll see $17,000, um, in special ed wages. A little further down, $17,000 under in neck tutor wages, so those offset each other. On page 3, thing that stands out, special ed tuition, um, non-public tuition elementary, $66,000. And again, this is, this is just a matter of, um, students, when we budget, we budget for the students we have, and then if something changes, they move in or whatever, uh, or move out, then we, we realize that savings. On page 4, most of the way down, guidance salaries. That was the change in guidance positions last year, uh, the adjustment we made. And again, jump in at any time if you've got any questions. I'm just hitting the highlights. So, on page 5, there's really nothing out of the ordinary there. Page 6, the only thing that stood out to me on that page, if you go down, uh, most of the way down, course tuition, teachers. Um, again, there's $6,400 still left in that line. We budgeted $17,000, and $10,500 was utilized this year. So, uh, contractual obligations there, but we, we under-expended that for $6,400. On page 7, most of the way down, new equipment technology, $30,000 over expended. Uh, if you remember, that was the, mostly due to the approval that was at the, what, two board meetings ago. Page 8, attorney and negotiator line, uh, we're about, we're still, we're still closing out those bills. It looks like, uh, we've encumbered all of that, so, um, it should be pretty close to $5,000 over expended on that line.
Is that mostly because of the arbitration?
Um, that was a chunk of it. That was a chunk of it, but we utilized that all year long.
Yeah.
Um, and then down the bottom, the principal salary and assistant principal salary, um, those were adjustments that we made last year, that were in this year, this past year's budget at the end of last year. Page 9, really not anything to report there. On page 10, um, one thing that stood out to me is building maintenance. Uh, we've still got $14,000 in there. Um, and the fuel oil, we knew that was gonna be a large savings this year because of the, the winter we had. So that's $33,000 savings there as well. And then down a little further, grounds maintenance, over expended $12,000. Um, that was for the approval at the end of the year, the paving and the tractor repairs. Page 11, we've got, uh, an over expenditure on transportation for $41,000. Um, but we've got an under expenditure or savings for, um, a bus monitor at 11 and, and transportation special ed, $41,000. So, some savings, um, offsetting there. And then, excuse me. And then on page 12, you've got your food service, um, food service director and food service wages. The reason those are over is that was the, um, benefit buyout at the end of the year when, when those people left. So looking at food service, we've got about 158,000 in expenditures, 119,000 in revenue. Um, and then we've got an encumbrance of $44,000. So, really, our, our loss for food service this year, um, was about, at, it was at $43,600. Um, but remember, $17,000 of that is for the end-of-the-year buyouts of those staff members that were leaving. So the difference really was about $26,000, um, as far as the food service deficit for this year.
Which is what we budgeted our transfer to be?
Yeah, about $25,000. So then on page 13, you've got your total elementary school costs. And then on page 14, um, tuition, other public schools and tuition, Co-Brown, um, we, we came within $2,400 of, of that. Special ed, non-public tuition high school, we had realized quite a savings there and in some, some movement with some students. And also special ed transportation high school in relation to that $61,000 savings. So all totaled, grand total of $465,169 at this point. And again, this number's gonna change a little bit. We've still gotta close some things out, but I'd say that's 95 to 98 percent of, of where it's gonna end up. So, um, any questions?
I have a couple. Um, number one on page 6, curriculum director?
Yep.
So, if I understand correctly, the discussion on the zero, that entire function has zero. So where are we gonna put that money?
That, that line has zero. You still have...
Curriculum director, total curriculum director has zero.
I understand that. You've still got a function code of, um, salaries. It would be the same, if you've got a, a curriculum director, it would be the same as a, a teaching position or anything else. You've got a function code of salaries.
But there's zero in that line. And, and there's zero in, in the entire function of curriculum director, it's a zero.
Mm-hmm.
And if the ruling, as I understand it from Barrett-Cristina, is that if we have money anywhere in that function, then we can put money in a zero line, there is no money in that function.
See, this...
Is this a function, though?
It depends on how clean you wanna make it, because if you've got, you've got, you've got, let me look back, Tim. You've got regular education, teacher salaries, function code of 1100. You could put the curriculum director in an 1100 line. It's cleaner, it's cleaner if you have a function code of 2212, where it identifies specifically your curriculum director.
Well, then I don't understand the ruling. My understanding of the ruling was, reading that email 150,000 times was that. If there was money in a function, so, um, improvement of instructions would be in a function, to my mind. Curriculum director is a function. Instructional staff training would be a function. If there's money in that function anywhere, then you could spend it out of a zero line. But there is no money in that function. So we got a ruling, and now we're breaking the ruling already.
We put it there for clarity. We can certainly put it under the 1100 under teacher salaries, and it's not gonna be identified as clearly.
I, I understand that, but the rules are the rules. I mean, that's, that's what Barrett-Cristina told us.
That, that is what they said, yes.
Yes. And, and if that's what they said, then I don't really care where it goes, other than I don't believe it should be put in a function that has a zero start.
We can put it under the 1100 function. We're just gonna have to identify it for the board and for the budget committee, because that's where it went, so.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Or you could put a dollar on the line.
For next time, no, we can't.
Right, for next, that would have to be for next time. Right.
Wouldn't matter for this time anyway, though, because we didn't go into the budget, so...
So, I don't have any more questions on the... Budget, this 15, 16 budget. I do have a question on the budget package, and I have another question on the, the budget committee package. I'm wondering, I did not receive it. Did the rest of the board, other than Bree, receive it? The budget committee package?
She emailed it.
She, I got an email.
You got it. I forwarded it to you again.
Yes.
You were on the original email. I saw her.
Are you still using my, I emailed you and informed you that I took that?
You got a Gmail account.
Yeah, I got a Gmail account now.
I'll double-check with Marjorie. I'm using it.
She didn't use it, because I didn't use it either. I sent it to your old one, but you still got it. I didn't know you had any one.
Sometimes I seem to...
I'll double-check. I know I'm using it now.
Okay, so, everything's the same, except it's Gmail.
Yeah, your online address is still your old one, so we'll talk to Steve about updating that as well.
Yep.
Um, so then I had a question, um, and it came up. Well, nevermind. I'll wait till the superintendent's discussion.
Anything else for the Business Administrators' report?
The only other thing in there that was the, at the last meeting, there was some concern that there wasn't an answer for the function code, so those are all of the, um, answers that we got. Those are the, the rulings that we got from our attorney, from the school board attorney, from DRA, from the auditors. If there's anything else that you'd like to add some clarity to that, we can do our best to, to get something else, but that's, those are all of the answers that, that we've received.
So it's not him going through these same questions? Because it looks like some of these are from...
They had some of those same questions, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for similar questions to come up, so we try to use, if we've already gotten an attorney's ruling, we try to, instead of paying another $600 for another ruling, using the same, same information. And that's all we had for the Business Administrators'.
Any, any further questions for the Business Administrator representative? So, okay, we'll move on to the principals' report.
Good evening. Um, so I provided you with a written report. A lot has changed in eight days, so I'll, um, fill you in on the changes real quick. You have nominations for, um, the three positions that we interviewed for recently, reading specialist, art, and assistant principal. Those were all committee interviews with teacher representation. Uh, Mr. Gudom, uh, Dr. Gudomsky, Mr. Runing sat in also on the assistant principal ones. Um, I do have good news on the world language teacher position. We reposted it with a focus primarily on Spanish, with French as a plus, and now have two applicants for that, so that's good news. Um, middle school positions, we will be interviewing next week. Um, so that's it on hiring. Any questions there?
So, we have everything posted that's, that's happened, and everything's being filled?
Um, yes. So the school counselor position just went up yesterday. AmeriCorps just went up yesterday internally. Um, we're hoping to get somebody who's familiar with our town and our school first, um, and then if we don't find that, then we'll put it out. Um, custodians, we're interviewing next week. So yes, there's a lot that's happening. Um, it's definitely taking the bulk of my time at this point. Um, handbooks, Mrs. Cremoni and I are going through both of them. Um, I should've added the word draft in here for the next meeting. Um, I will have drafts for you to approve pending some changes. Um, the reason it will be drafts is we'll have staff changes that probably will still need to be made after that. I'd like to work with the new assistant principal on some of the language around discipline, um, in the handbooks, and then also have an opportunity to send it out to staff and get feedback back from them. Um, but the bulk of that work will be done, um, for the next meeting. Um, kindergarten enrollment has changed. It's actually gone down. We're currently at 26 as of 3:00 PM today, um, students registered for kindergarten. Last time, you had asked for a little bit of information about the block schedule and how that was received by teachers. Um, I asked Mrs. Cremoni to write just a brief summary on that, since she was here and I wasn't, um, and I provided that for you. I also, after I, um, wrote this, found some feedback forms that Mrs. DePry had collected from staff. I've not had a chance to review those yet, but I will. Um, and if I find any nuggets of wisdom in there, I will make sure to include them. Um, the technology plan, Mr. Robert and I went over it together, made some edits, um, and that's in there for your review. He did want me to add that he is planning on putting an addendum in there regularly, so it'll be sort of more of a working document and be more up-to-date as we proceed. so it'll be sort of more of a working document and be more up-to-date as we proceed. And as I mentioned, the Americor coordinator has been posted. We had an initial meeting to just sort of lay out our first priorities, and once we get somebody in place as the coordinator, we'll really be able to hit the ground running. So I think that is it.
Any questions for Ms. Young?
Tell us about your assistant principal candidate?
Sure. He is coming to us as an experienced school counselor. He does have his certificate of advanced graduate studies in educational leadership. He completed it in two years, which I have to say is less than half the time it took me to do mine. Good for him. I spoke with three administrators with whom he's worked closely. They said that we would be lucky to have him. He will be a great catch for our school. He's very relatable, personable, a very hard worker, and we saw the relatable and personable piece in his interview, interviews we did too. He has done his admin internship and served in a lot of administrative-like roles. He's not been an administrator before, but they certainly used his skill set and gave him opportunities to practice. And so I think he'll be a good fit. As I said, it was a few different people that were on the interview committee, and everybody was supportive of him, so.
How many candidates were there?
We had twenty-four applicants. We invited six to interview, five accepted, and then of those five, we came up with two finalists who had a second interview, and then he was the clear choice after the second round.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to policies. We have one, two, three, four policies. I believe they're all new policies, right?
They, I believe they...
Or no, BDBs.
Yeah, one of them, one of them has, has been there and is revision.
No, okay, my apologies.
But they're all first readings.
So these are all for the first reading, so we should give any commentary and then see if they wanna come back for a first reading or move on to a second reading, right?
Yeah, you'll see some minor adjustments that were made in, in policy BDB. GBK is a model policy from the School Board Association, as well as GCQ, also a model policy. And then JHBCA is a newly recommended policy from the School Board Association as well.
IHBCA, you mean?
IHBCA. What did I say?
I thought you said J, but...
I may have.
I think you did.
I may have. IHBCA.
I'm gonna be speaking in Latin. Any discussion on these policies? Do we need a motion to move them to second reading?
Yep.
So someone can make a motion to move them either individually or altogether to a second reading?
I just wanted to explain on the BDB, the cross-outs that we, that Scott and I discussed, because as I was reading through this, I was like, well, we don't really have a secretary that is part of our board. And the superintendent has, I guess, traditionally handled the reorganization meeting, reorganizational meeting, so that's why we, we crossed out the policies and just revamped it a little bit, just to more of what we do here.
The only, the only part I have, is the first line there needs an and, right? If we're gonna get rid of and secretary, it needs to be chairperson and vice-chairperson. Hit them up.
Oh, yep, okay.
I have one point of interest. The new certification documents that are coming out for, for guidance counselors now actually say school counselor, and the New Hampshire School Counselor Association really is advocating for the job title to be changed to school counselor, so I didn't know if that's something you wanna consider for GCQ.
GCQ?
In the fourth line down.
Yep.
Don't know too if that will be something that will come back when Barrett brings back all of these. Because right, I think this is the new, this, the reason it's italic is because this is the sample policy from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, but I don't know when it was exactly. But I think that's an idea, just, you know, a great idea to put in whatever it is.
In the IHBCA, it says school slash guidance counselor. So, interesting.
But it's supposed to say what?
Well, she's saying school counselor.
Technically, now a school counselor, their certificates now say school counselor.
Instead of, oh, school guidance counselor.
Yeah, that's an, that's an easy change.
So, so if we're gonna change that, we should change it in IHBCA as well. Right now it's got a slash and says both, but...
IHBCA.
Go on. Okay. So with these minor edits, can we still bring them back as a second reading?
Yep.
Do they have to go back? Okay. Because they're not major changes, I assume, right?
Well, that's what first reading's for, is to make any edits and then bring it back for a final reading, for a second reading.
One comment I had on, on policy GCQ. Immorality clause, misconduct for unprofessional con, misconduct or unprofessional conduct, which is the second bullet of immorality, on or off duty. I don't know what people think about that. I'm not a real big fan of the off-duty stuff. You know, if someone's doing something in the privacy of their own home or life, I don't think we should have anything to do with it, but that's just my opinion. And also conviction of a crime, I mean, no, depends on the crime, I think. It's, some things are much more severe than others. Maybe you get caught speeding, it shouldn't be an issue, obviously, but that's technically a crime as well. I don't know. It just seemed a little overreaching to me, some of these parts, but if no one agrees, that's...
Well, I think, and I don't know, the board and administration recognize the definition of immorality, failure to maintain competency standards, and the failure to conform to regulations prescribed, include herein, are not intended to be exhaustive, and are not intended to limit the board or administration from taking such employment actions as may be warranted in any given circumstance with any given set of facts.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a weasel out, I guess, right?
Right, I mean, I guess, you know, I don't know. I, I just feel like if this is what the state of New Hampshire is saying, is that these are the, the policies.
The model policies. It's not the, it's the NS...
Right.
It's not the state of New Hampshire, it's the School Board Association.
But, I mean...
So I just wanted to bring it up.
I think that it would probably end up in the laps of the administrators before it would end up in our laps anyways, and...
Yeah. Any other? Any discussion on these, guys?
Do you guys have anything?
I actually agree with you on the off-duty thing. I don't know if that...
You do agree with me?
I do.
Yeah. Enough that, do you wanna change it? Or is, I mean, there is value to sticking to the NHSBA guidelines as well, I'm sure.
True. Do you offhand know if, because this is a new, I'll see if there is that discussion of the off-duty type of thing.
Yeah, I'm always a little bit concerned of enforcing that, misconduct or unprofessional conduct, on or off duty. I think when it's on duty, it's pretty cut and dried. If it's, if it's off duty, that same behavior that is cut and dried when you're doing your job is a real gray area when you're not off duty.
I guess to me too, but what does technically off-duty mean? Does that mean that they can do something down in the parking lot because it's, you know, they're technically not on the clock anymore? Versus if they're doing something at home?
Well, I mean, since, unprofessional conduct, off-duty doesn't even make sense to me. I mean, there's no context there, right? In a way.
So we can take that off.
Yeah, we can take that off, you know, we can bring it back for a second reading, and I'll think about it, and then, and then decide, and we'll see it again.
And strike through and...
Right. But, it's just something.
I mean, I guess most likely if there's something misconduct or something going on off-duty, it's probably gonna be into letting the police versus us anyway, so...
One of the things, right. Then we'll get into the conviction of crime thing, but...
Yeah.
Or there's...
He'd be in deep bad trouble, huh?
I'll do a strike through. I will never sign another policy.
Okay, someone like to make a motion to bring these back for a second reading?
Motion to bring...
You can do all of them.
All of them back for a second reading? BDB, GBK, GCQ, IHBCA.
Second it. Any further discussion on policies? Or we'll just bring them back? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? abstained? Three, one extension? All right, so we'll be seeing these later.
The other piece that you should probably have a discussion on as far as policies, I know that there was a conversation last time about having names at the bottom of your policy. I asked Barrett Christina about that and, and what needed to be on policies, and he said that what is at the bottom of your policies is up to the board. Whether you want the revision date, whether you want the school board listed out each name, that varies from board to board, and he said there's really no mandate on that. His recommendation is that there certainly should be a revision date if there is one on there, because then anybody looking at the policy can see if it's been attended to last month or, or a decade ago. But other than that, it really is up to the board.
I think having the names of the board members is a little silly. It makes policies even longer than they actually already are. I think having the date on there and the revision date is perfectly acceptable. My only question is, is there a place where previous boards are listed somewhere that if somebody wanted to look it up?
Right, right.
And they said, oh, this was revised in, you know, two thousand and six, who was on the board then, and they wanna know that, is there a place that they could go to get that information?
Right, that's, that's where I see these names being useful, is when people are looking at the policies and have some question about him, you know?
Only in the minutes. There's not a archived list somewhere.
Any of the minutes, any of your town reports would have your, they should have the school board elections in there, so, I mean, it, it may be a bit cumbersome to go find those, but you do have that history.
Something you really wanna know, you'd spend the time looking for it, so. I think it's, yeah, I think it's a waste of paper to have us, have the names listed out. I think just the date on the bottom is good, because it just, sometimes it goes on to that third page with just the names of people, and it's such a waste of paper.
And I've seen it done both ways. I've seen other boards that list just the date of revisions, and other boards that list their names out, so it, it really is up to the board.
Do we need to take a vote on that? Is that what we have to do?
Well, I think you should decide as a board what you're gonna have on there, yeah.
Is that a, I, I make a motion that we just have the revision date on the bottom. If somebody wants to second it.
Second it.
Okay, discussion on that? So do we wanna have a revision, so what you're saying is, you adopted by the board with the date? And also the reaffirmed or the...
Yeah, and any adoption date, any reaffirmed date, any revised date, anything like that should, certainly should, in my opinion, should be on there.
Yeah. I like having the names there. I think it's, it's more use, I think it's useful to go through and see, like, when you're looking at policies, who you can talk to to find out why they adopted it maybe in the first place. I like having that there, and, and I think it helps so you can see when, when things happened. So I'm actually not in favor of that. I'd like to just leave it as it is, honestly. Any other discussion?
I don't care one way or the other, as long as when I abstain, you put I abstained.
It's in the minutes.
Right.
Then I'll vote to not have a name on there. I don't want my name on there.
All in favor of the proposal?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, three to one.
Okay, so we'll go back through, the names come off, and the dates stay on.
So we'll do that as we revise them going forward, right?
If we need to reprint them or anything.
Well, I, I, we're not gonna reprint them, but I can have Nancy and Steve, a little at a time, go through and methodically change those.
Should we wait until we get them?
Yeah.
No, it should start today.
Well, should we wait?
No, no, he's saying for the ones that we aren't, like, going over right now, like all the other policies.
I, I think policies from today on that are approved by the board should not have the names on them.
Right, right.
Anything in the past should be left alone.
Right.
That wasn't the policy.
Right, we're not gonna change policies without a board.
Okay.
That makes it easier.
Yep. Anything else on policies anyone wants to discuss? Moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right, I'll start off with the personnel report I handed out to you. We've got two resignations, one from Michelle Cremoni and one from Lisa Labella.
I'm to accept the resignations of Mrs. Cremoni and Ms. Labella with regret.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Do they both have a contract with us now? Or just one?
Just one. We, Michelle did not sign her contract. We knew about it beforehand, so we put a letter of agreement into effect for the month of July, just to, it was, it was our decision as to when, we didn't wanna put a contract in place that she would have to break, so she had a letter of agreement for July, so that one's all set, and Lisa Labella had signed her contract, so she falls under the newly negotiated teachers' agreement, as far as a hundred dollars to break the contract and the cost of, of health and dental for the months of July.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's four zero.
Nominations, Adrian Alford for assistant principal at seventy thousand dollars prorated to a start time, and I believe we've set July twenty-seven as, as the start date.
So what's the overall yearly pay?
Seventy thousand.
Right, so probably, because Michelle...
It's seventy total, but it will be prorated, 'cause he's not, he's missing July, basically.
What was the overall pay of our previous?
Seventy-two-something this year.
But you want them one at a time? Move to approve Adrian Alfred, Alford, assistant principal, seventy thousand prorated.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I do wanna say that we had a, a very good pool of candidates. It was really encouraging, the, the young talent that we were seeing in those assistant principal interviews, so that was, that was a, a nice, a nice interview process and a nice pool. I think we've got a good person there. The second is Melissa Legassi as art teacher, comes in at step zero for thirty-one thousand nine ninety-eight, bachelor's degree.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
And all of these teaching positions are backing up four years because of our, our teachers' contract, so whatever experience they come in, I take the experience minus four. So that's, that's how I reach these steps. The reading specialist, Jessica Carloni, master step thir, masters thirty, step two for forty-one thousand seven oh three.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, what else do I have here? I wanted to, I guess, just give a heads up to the board. We had talked about this a little bit in, in, in previous meetings, about the food service position. Remember, we need somebody to take care of the free and reduced lunch paperwork. What I'd like to do is bring back to you at your next meeting a proposal of an hourly person not to exceed, and I'm thinking it'll probably, I've gotta do the hours out, probably somewhere in the vicinity of ten to... probably somewhere in the vicinity of ten to fifteen thousand dollars for that paperwork. It will probably be a lot of time upfront in September, October, November, and then fewer hours as we go on. But I wanna put together, I just wanna put it on your radar and at the next meeting I'll bring forward a more kind of cohesive recommendation for taking care of that piece.
Sounds good.
Could you check with the Fresh Picks? Dover or Kingston and find out how many hours their people are used?
Sure.
Just, just to give us some sort of an idea?
Yep.
And there's numerous schools around that use Fresh Picks and they must have the same problem.
Yep.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
I'm just.
Seems like a lot, I know you are.
I'm just pulling that number out of thin air, but.
An idea of somebody who's doing this, like Dover or Kingston, that's two schools who are doing it.
Right, and I can also try to ask our food service directors in Stratford and Nottingham how much time, if they can give me some kind of a read on how much time they're spending on just that piece. So, I just, again, I don't have a real good solid recommendation for you tonight, but I wanted to put it on your radar for, for a future meeting. And I've got a, uh, we've got the contract into the state, as soon as they get it approved, they're gonna send it back and then we'll get a final look from our legal, get that signed, I've got a meeting with Chris Farrell from Fresh Picks on Monday morning coming up. Just to make sure that we've got things in place and, and, you know, we're not behind the eight ball as we come down the home stretch here, so. That's in process. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up is, and I gave Keith the letter from Pittsfield. Pittsfield has formed a exploratory committee to look at their high school students. Their enrollment's going down, they're around two hundred students, so they're exploring whether it would be feasible to tuition their kids out. So they sent me a letter and the board chair a letter requesting consideration for them to go to Co Brown Academy. So I need to get back to them, I called Dave Smith and let him know, so he knows it's coming. And I need to get back to them and just say, this really has to be referred through Co Brown, it has nothing to do with the Northwood School District, so. I think they're kind of confusing the two. But I'll get back to them and, and just let them know about that as well. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the superintendent?
The question keeps coming up and I know that we're gonna have to discuss it sometime. The issue of having the reserve funds in the budget.
Yep.
Which skews the budget. Makes no sense. So if you take for instance the sixteen seventeen budget that was presented to the budget committee. The sixteen seventeen budget is on paper eleven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, eleven million nine hundred and eight thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Which is wholly untrue. Having the ninety thousand dollars that was approved in March to come out of the fifteen sixteen year, which it will because we have surplus, it has absolutely nothing to do with that sixteen seventeen year, it just muddies the water. It just, I, I, I just don't understand it. I don't understand the thought process, I just don't get it. I mean, this started way back when, when the financial director thought that what was approved in March would come out of the following year, that was proven to be wrong and, but that's when this all started. And it just really is irritating to look at a budget that should be eleven million eight hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents to be eleven million nine hundred and eight. I just don't get it, and I wish the board would at least talk about it and make a decision. If, if a decision is made, you wanna do that, then I'll shut up about it, you know, well, I'm not gonna shut up about it, but I'll shut up about it here. It makes no sense.
Can, can, with the board's approval, can we ask Marjorie to look into this and see what she can do about it? Because I agree with you, I think, I think taking out of there makes sense. And, and see what the possibilities are if we can.
Yeah, I know this has been a, a bone of contention and confusing forever, I mean, I get that.
We, we asked her, so, Bree and I met with her two days ago, or three days ago, whatever it was. Previous to the budget committee. And my understanding from Marjorie is she's waiting for direction from the board. But absolutely ask Marjorie, it, it's, it's.
You think that's true?
Another month or two isn't gonna make any difference. But it absolutely skews the budget. It just shouldn't be, it has, that ninety thousand dollars has nothing to do with the sixteen seventeen year. The, the, the process for the sixteen seventeen year will happen in March, it might be ninety, it might be like the previous three years, a hundred and twenty-one thousand of warrant articles that, that get approved. But that ninety thousand is from the fifteen sixteen year. And I'm assuming it will come out because it was, they were all approved. Just don't get it.
I, I agree with you, I, I, I just don't wanna make a directive, I'd, I'd rather ask her in person first.
Another month isn't gonna make any difference at all.
Yeah, let me see what I can find out and if, if we need a directive from the board, we'll bring it back and let you do a directive. But let, let me see, and I agree, I mean, we gotta clean that up.
Let's put that on the agenda for next, for next meeting, if it's, if she can make it here.
I know that's been confused.
The other question I have is regarding Alt Ed, and my questions are a little different than what the budget committee wants to know. Bree can bring the budget committee in the right time, but I, I, I don't understand the Alt Ed discussion that was given to us by Marjorie. Apparently, what is being said is that we had over the course of the year, six different students that averaged, I don't remember what it was, but anyway, like three point four four students, I think it was. It is my recollection that we started the year, we're talking fifteen sixteen, with one Alt Ed kid. It was a complete surprise to find that we had another one because that other one did not go through the educational committee, so I don't know where he or she came from. So, but at the point during the budgeting process, Mr. Runing actually called a member of the voting public to inform that person that we had two Alt Ed kids. Now at the end of the year, in a question from the budget committee, we're being told that there were six. And again, Bree will ask you the budget committee's question, but I, I'd like to know how many we actually had. Where did they come from? Because I, I listen very well to all of you and I never heard of one instance where a kid was removed from Co Brown into the Alt Ed. Now maybe that happened and we just weren't at fault, but how many were there over the course of the year?
I, I could tell you that can happen, be, even going through the education committee, because the education committee often will put on, put kids on probation where, you know, they have to not have any administrative referrals, they have to, you know, get ones and twos for effort and conduct and stuff like that. And if they stick the probation fine, they stay in school, if they don't stick the probation, something happens, they don't come back to the education committee, the education committee, they're, they're gone.
I, I understand that it can happen, but I, I would personally like to have some kind of a handle during the course of the year, how many kids we have in Alt Ed. I, I was very, very supportive and, and, and went out of my way to, to say how good a job we've done in that we only had one Alt Ed student, and then the next thing I know, we got six.
I don't think it's our job though to have a handle on how many kids are in Alt Ed.
Well, I certainly do.
I don't, it's the, it's the SAU's job.
No, no, we're the school board, I have a right to know.
We can, we can.
I just wanna know how many kids, where they, when, when they come in and out.
I don't see why this could be part of our census numbers.
It's, et cetera.
But it is.
I'll touch base with Mr. Runing and ask him to do an, an update on, see, the, the thing with Alt Ed is that we've got some kids that are there for a long period of time, some kids that are in and out.
I understand that, yep.
So at any point in time during the year, it's gonna fluctuate a little bit, but let me touch base with Scott and ask him to do, look at an overview for this past year and, and give you a little bit more clarity.
Is, is this something we could add to our, we, we get our numbers for Co Brown and the elementary school, we just have Alt Ed in there as well? On, on the biweekly?
The budget committee has asked for that time and again, and, and we did have it and then stopped. That, that it show the number of all kids in Alt Ed. And as a school board member, I have every right to know everything that's going on in this school, I might not need to know names and, and, and stuff, but I have a right to know whatever's going on.
Board has a right to know. The board has a right to know.
The board has, yes, absolutely, I'm a board member.
And, and my question not, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily follow who's in and who's out of, of Alt Ed. My question would be, is that six total for the year, six at a time? I know there's not, I don't believe there's six at a time, but there may be at a different time during the year, six students that have come and gone or some overlap, so.
So that's what I would like to find out.
Let me touch base with Scott and, and.
When they came in, when they left, and, and why, and.
We'll do an update.
And the other question is, as we all know, well, not we, we all know, maybe the, the new people don't, that the joint board made the decision, correctly so, that a Co Brown stu, or any student, that leaves that environment and goes into the Alt Ed, that the money follows the kid. How is that exactly reflected in the budgeting, in, in, in the budget, in the, in the money here, the financials?
I believe it's billed out for a portion of, of the Alt Ed directors' salary.
Okay, could you find out for sure so I know?
Yep.
And the other question I have for you, we, we talked about Fresh Picks. And I, I tried to look through the budget and figure out how the finances are gonna be reflected in our financials regarding Fresh Picks. You know, I'd like to know, you know, they're gonna bill us how, how is that gonna show up in our financials? I mean, we, we have money, correctly so, because of, we didn't know what we were doing, in there for payroll and all kinds of things in, in the food service, so. So how, how is that going to show up in our financials? I just, I really don't know, I tried to figure out how it would be correctly sho, how it would be correct to do it, and I really couldn't come up with an answer, so it's something new and I'd like to know.
Well, that'll be another good question for some of the other districts that are using Fresh Picks, so I, I can find that out.
This seems like we oughta get on board with that sooner than later, so. Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? You good? Barbie?
Yeah.
We'll move on to committee reports. To start off, I just want to, um, to say we did have two new additional Co Brown students I signed in today, so, just to keep everybody up to date on that.
We did what?
Two new Co Brown students moving into town.
But we don't know how many have left?
I don't see that, I'm just telling you what I see. Well, I'm sure we'll see it in our next.
Our next week.
Where our packet.
We'll be getting an enrollment report, right.
Any other committees, I know budget committee, would you like to go over that now?
Budget committee, met last night. I have no additional questions for Marjorie this time, just a few issues, we've actually talked about almost all of them already. Dr. Kudansky noted that the encumbrances will be taken care of soon. We've had the zero balance discussion, it's in there actually twice, number two and number four, for two different reasons. I think they want us to have that discussion, I would certainly be willing to have that discussion when it's time to make the budget. The other thing, Tim touched on it a little bit with the Alt Ed. I think what the budget committee wanted to know was which of those students were from Northwood as opposed to from elsewhere. I think there was also some discussion about listing how long each of those students were in the program, but then we weren't sure if that would be too much of an identifier for those students, so that's why we wanted to talk to Mr. Runing about that, he's not here, so I suppose we can just.
He'll be at the next meeting.
Ask him, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, I, I mean, we, we can probably do a, a running number of days.
Yeah, I think they would've been fine with just knowing which students were from Northwood, I think there was some dissension about how much information was really necessary, and I think that was the main thing they wanted to know.
Alright, I'll have that discussion with Scott.
And also to put it back in the enrollment, as Tim said, on, as a separate line, the way it used to be. The only other thing that we talked about was the insurance rate and the do not exceed. Tim and I talked about this with Marjorie on Tuesday, actually, and that's something that we'd like to talk about when we make the budget as well, so, just as a full board. That's all I have.
Sort of a damned if you do, damned if you don't situation, though.
Thank you, any other policy? Policy committee we saw?
We didn't meet because, yes, those, those were from a couple of weeks ago and then Barrett had recommended that we wait until we do any of the new ones that come out, but wait until the rest of them come back.
Facilities committee, you guys meet, Tim? Wonder what's going on there, okay. Yeah, I think that's it then, for that. Old Business Technology Update?
Well, the tech plan is in there on page forty-seven to seventy-five. There was some discussion last time that, that Steve touched base on the, the tech plan and questions about what's in it and things, so that's for your review.
I assume he'll come with us with the amend, the addendum at some point as well as the plan? Great. Any questions on that? Okay, parking lot items. I believe we can take the NFBA update off the parking lot?
Yep.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that, so how are we gonna deal with, with this?
Technology plan.
Read it.
Well, I've read it.
Okay. Is there something you, something you wanna do about it?
We're gonna have a discussion sometime about, I, I mean, one of things like, uh, Northwood is a rural community, blah, 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 about forty-two hundred and forty-one persons are full-time residents and about twice as many have second homes here. I mean, we do have a lot of second homes, but not twice as, we don't have eight thousand people in second, second homes, that's nowhere near that. And we're down to, I think, I saw the figures recently, many homes that were second homes have been made into year-round homes and people are living in them now. I mean, I, I'm just, at, at what point are we gonna talk about this, some of this?
When would you like to talk about it?
I'd just like a date, you know, like, first meeting next month, or the first meeting of the next month, or, you know, I just, I, I don't want it to fall through the cracks, I guess is my point.
So we have it in our packet, let's review it, you wanna just address it in the next meeting?
Well, that was the twenty-ten census also. It says it right in there, it was the twenty-ten census.
But that wasn't that.
Well, that, you left that part of it out, though. I know, but you left that part of it out, it does say it was the twenty-ten census, though.
Can we discuss this in our?
Yeah, but I'm just making sure that it's, that he reads the, the correct thing here.
So on your next agenda, uh, we'll ask Steve to attend as well because this should be, it, it, this should be finalized into a document because we've gotta submit it to the state, so. Why don't I put it on the next agenda, we can ask Steve to attend, and if you have any additional feedback at that point, we can, we can hopefully revise it and.
Fair enough.
Send it on its way.
Sounds good. Okay, back to the parking lot. Newly paved parking lot. Budget, we will get to cafeteria ceiling. I assume that since the facility committee didn't meet, we don't have any new information on that. CIP plan, did we get, we finalized the RFP? Have we put that out for?
Uh, no, you've got two different things here. The CIP plan, the capital improvement plan, that was something that the board wanted to talk about, whether you're gonna be developing a capital improvement or, or a plan or not. The RFP was put out on strategic planning.
Sorry, I combined them in my head.
So the CIP that you've got on here was just put there as a place marker because at one point you were discussing starting having a capital improvement plan of whether it's, you know, five years or ten years or whatever you wanted.
Would the board like to move forward with this, would you wanna talk?
I'd like to boot that to the facilities committee.
Okay. I'd be okay with that, should we replace it with strategic planning? Because that's something that we want to keep an eye on and revisit maybe every meeting to make sure to see where we are with it. Everybody be okay with that? So we'll replace this with strategic planning, we'll put this on the, on the.
Why don't, why don't I leave the CIP plan on here and just put in the notes to the facility committee?
Okay, yep.
And I will put on the strategic planning.
Thank you. As far as strategic planning, is there any updates on that?
Not yet.
Not yet, is, is the RFP out there?
The RFP is out there, yes.
We just haven't gotten any bids or?
The closing date hasn't come yet, so.
Thanks, yep, that's fine.
What is moving drama to operating budget, what is that?
This is something the clubs committee came back with, as an idea of expanding our club's budget by taking drama out of it.
Because drama's not a club, I vaguely, vaguely remember this, but.
Because, because drama is a big chunk of the money in our, in the clubs. Because drama is a big chunk of the money in the club's budget. So, if we budgeted for drama separately, then that money in clubs would be doing-
Sneaky way to put more money into clubs, rather than just say, we need more money in clubs.
Why don't we just put more money in clubs?
It's not a sneaky way of doing it. That's not-
Well, I mean, you're saying that drama's not a club anymore, and it totally is, so that seems a little strange.
If we can put more money into clubs, I think we would all-
And that's exactly what I said. If that's the way that the board would prefer to do it, then that's fine. What they're saying is that the drama, the person that was working in drama was actually, deserved more money than she was able to take, because there's this amount of money, she's taking this amount, you know, she's taking a large part of it, and they'd like to be able to pay her more, because she works more hours than what they're paying her for. So, they thought if they could take it out of the clubs-
But the other thing is that it's not just, it's not just our budget, because it's, some of the stuff is written in the contract, too. So, we have to work them both together, you know, and-
And this last collective bargaining agreement, CVA, went up five thousand dollars for clubs.
That's not enough?
Apparently not.
Oh.
And speaking of clubs, I think that-
Not for the amount of work that she does for drama.
Well, her work was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, but in the CVA, we went from ten thousand to fifty thousand in this new contract that we just finished the first year. So, well, actually, the only year. So, I mean, we did go up five thousand dollars. And speaking of, I just remembered the club discussion a year ago. Yavna is, Camp Yavna is a joy's camp, and they are really doing something that I think is incredibly exciting. It's a Hebrew college, although it's, everybody thinks of it as a camp. They have started a four-week course, very similar to a club, on robotics. And what a really, I mean, that is an up-and-coming subject that a lot of people, I bet you a lot of kids at this school would like to get in on, some sort of a robotics club.
There is a club on the new clubs that Ms. Dow is running.
Of robotics?
Yes.
Okay, then, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I just think that's kind of a nice thing to do. That's certainly an up-and-coming subject.
She's very into that. She loves that stuff.
She should come down and see the people on there. We got a kid from Poland that's doing his masters on robotics.
That's the type of thing that they would like to expand more on, but because drama takes such a big chunk out of the, out of the clubs.
Why don't we change this to say, instead of moving drama to operating budget, let's put in-
Negotiating more money into the clubs.
Right, figuring out the amount of money we want to spend on clubs in some way or another. And that's part of our budget, I guess, too, but it's also, it's something to keep in mind for our contracts as well. So, when we're talking contracts, we should keep that in mind as well. So, let's leave it on there, keep it fresh in everybody's mind.
Is it the proportion of kids that are in drama versus the proportion of kids that are in other clubs? Is that why drama gets so much more?
Well, that and the work behind it.
Yeah.
I mean, drama lasts the whole year, whereas a lot of the other clubs last for, well, except for like Homework Club and things like that, but, you know, like Lego Club only lasts for a certain amount of weeks and things like that, so they sort of look at the stipend.
It may be worth looking at the stipend amounts for athletic coaches as well, because those aren't the same for all of them, and they're not the same amount of work for all of them either.
Right.
That might be worth taking a look at at some point as well, because it's a similar situation, where you get a little bit more for one sport and the other, and are you doing more work for that sport?
It's really subjective, honestly.
Can be. I mean, depends on, I mean, you can count the hours.
Yeah, of course. But I mean, for a club like robotics, where things would probably be more expensive if they had to buy things, I mean-
Well, I think that's the thing with drama, too, that is that they do a lot of buying things, costumes.
Well, no, the, that stipend has nothing to do with buying.
No, not at all.
No, it's just the pay for the person.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yes. And there is no drama budget. There is no drama line in our budget. Drama has their own money that they've been raising, and that's how they get their money to do these productions and to pay for the productions, and they charge, you know, admission to get in and stuff like that. So, it's not, there's no line in the budget. That is just a stipend for the person running-
Isn't that stipend based on a certain number of hours at a, at the, a particular rate, though?
It is, but if you look at the number of hours that drama is stipend for, and the number of hours that drama really does, I mean, that's not even a quarter of what Ms. Rush was doing.
Okay.
And that's Mrs. Rush?
And that's what, that's what the clubs was saying at that point was, you know.
Mrs. Rush is going to swirl and mist in drama, and elsewhere.
Do you know if the clubs committee is going to have a meeting? Because it might be a good time to do that and maybe talk about some of these issues and come back with recommendations.
Oh, can't wait. I mean, we hadn't planned on meeting again, because everything was finalized.
But if we wanted to make changes for the budget for next year, that might be worth doing.
Well, I guess it's either we put it, that's a negotiation thing, that's not a, not a club's thing, I guess.
I'd be interested in seeing what the clubs committee thought of that, I guess, so. What is the, what do we want to accomplish? And then we can try to do that in negotiations and in the budget.
And it might be a moot point now. I mean, I don't know. There might be less productions this year.
We'll leave it on that, we'll leave it on the parking lot list then, for now. School board timeline, I was looking at this earlier for July. I think we've done everything that we're supposed to be doing. Handbooks are on their way, we reviewed the bus routes. School schedule, K three with school board, does that? Discuss the school schedule. We already had a scheduled discussion over this here.
Yeah, and I think that that's probably, as Jocelyn gets more and more familiar with the school and the schedules and everything else, I mean, I think that that's something that will probably come back as part of the principal's report, you know, as we get to the end of the summer.
So, August is coming right up. We have on here plans for the NTA and school board lunch, worth thinking about. Update on summer maintenance and facility. List of teacher workshops, update on expected enrollments, but I think we're going to get that anyway next meeting. And contract unions to start negotiations.
Yep.
We're all set for that, so. Stuff that needs to be done soon, but not right now. Okay, future agenda items. Our next meeting is eight-four, nine-four? Eight-four. August fourth. So far, we have on here, I have, in addition to our regular stuff, discussion of the free and reduced lunch position, talk about how we're going to represent the surplus spending in our budget, an update on the Alt Ed student enrollment numbers, budget for the food service director, and a review of technology plan with Mr. Roberts. Is there anything else anyone wants to add to our agenda for next meeting?
Sure, discussion on the need of a second guidance counselor.
Second guidance counselor?
Second one.
Guidance counselor, like to rehire?
School counselor.
Yeah, prior to putting out for one.
Prior to what, Tim?
Prior to advertising for one.
I'd like it advertised as an anticipated.
Yeah.
We've already posted it.
Thank you.
We can discuss it.
I'd like a discussion. I won't go for another guidance counselor. We don't need even one. Do is ridiculous. We're going to be down to three hundred and eighty students next year.
Yeah, because you have no idea what they do.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Anything else? Okay, our future meeting's coming up. We have an August fourth and August eighteenth. On August twenty-second is our joint board meeting at the SAU office, and then September first and fifteenth, regular board meetings. Is there any closing public comment? Go ahead.
Hey, come on. No, she just has an inquiry mind. Yeah, just have a couple of questions. You guys were discussing the policies that you're putting out for first reading and whatever. Where would I go to look for those policies to read them?
On the website.
Are they posted on the school's website?
Yeah, they're posted a couple of places. If you go on saunine.org, and you look under school boards, you'll find all of the policies for all of the different districts posted under the different school board.
Okay.
And if you go on the school site, you'll see them posted on there as well.
Okay, and they'll be shown as first reading, or are only the ones on the website, ones that have been approved and are now official?
The ones that are on the website are the ones that are approved and official. The ones that are just gone for first reading, go to Steve Robert, and he posts them for first reading before we do the second reading.
And he'll post them on that site?
Yes. Not any, those don't go on the saunine.org site, those go on the school site.
School site?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe they are posted on the bulletin board at some point.
Well, that's all well and good if you happen to be in town during the day when the school building's open. I'm interested in reading them, and I'm not available during the day, so. Because I did have a couple of questions regarding the discussion you guys were having on the crime and immorality thing off duty and whatever. And maybe I'm looking at the big picture, but it strikes me that if a staff member is involved in something that's considered potentially a crime or immoral, unless there's language in the policy that precludes that person from being dismissed, unless they're formally charged, as a parent, I don't know that I would want my child going to school with a staff member who was found to be in possession of a meth plant or something. Granted, you're not, you're innocent until proven guilty, however, we all know court can take quite some time. It's something I wanted to read, in any event. The second question I had regarded the lunch program and the additional, well, currently we've got a hundred and forty-seven thousand and change in the lunch program line for the sixteen-seventeen school year. Although I don't completely understand it, I remembered at the last meeting, it was indicated that the total financial commitment by going with fresh picks was going to be something short of four thousand dollars for the year. So, am I safe in presuming that approximately a hundred and forty-two grand or a little above that is going to now become surplus?
No.
In this budget? Why would it not if we, our financial commitment is only, with the exception of the amount that you would have to pay someone to do the free and reduced lunch program?
That financial commitment was three, three thousand, four thousand, whatever it was.
Yeah, it was under four thousand.
In addition to what you've got budgeted. You don't have a free lunch program. You don't, you don't have a, you still have to pay for your lunch program. You're paying for their service.
Now, I'm very confused. What is their service, then?
It's the same as our lunch program, except we're contracting it out. So, we're still paying for staffing and food and everything else. It's just we're contracting it out. We're contracting that service, and they're paying, they're managing the food service program.
So, we're paying them just under four thousand dollars to oversee the lunch program. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yep. I mean, accurate? No, that's not accurate.
Well, we just, perhaps I can get together with somebody who can more thoroughly explain that to me, because this is something that you're going to have to, I think, potentially thoroughly explain at budget time.
Yeah, I think that there's, I think that there's a, the good question of how it's going to be reflected in our budget. In future years, right now, you've, we've developed a budget for our food service program. In future years, you may see a line of contracted services. So, instead of a hundred and forty, a-
It's one forty-seven and change.
So, instead of a hundred and forty-seven thousand split over a variety of lines, reflected in your budget, you may just see a hundred and forty-seven thousand contracted service, food service.
It'd actually be like a hundred and fifty.
Well, four thousand dollars, so it'd be a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Right.
And right now, you look at, we take in so much money, I forget what that is, but we took in so much money, and our expenses were so much, the difference is going to be around forty-three thousand dollars. Next year, that will be whatever that number is, thirty-three seventeen, whatever that number is, or less. It could be less, but it can't be more.
So, instead of running a forty thousand dollar deficit because of the free and reduced lunches and everything that we always run, well, whatever it is that we always run a deficit for, for the food programs, the deficit cannot be more than that, whatever that, thirty-four hundred or whatever it was, based on this program.
So, if there's twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted, like there is for the fifteen-sixteen year, to, for safety, if we had a problem like we did this year, or probably really every year, if there's twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget, and I think there is, then all but thirty-three hundred will be surplus.
Okay.
Is it really okay, Ginger?
No, but I'll get together with somebody who, when we all have time, or when that person and I have time to sit and connect it.
Any last things? Just want to make sure everybody else-
One last question, and that's just regarding the Alt Ed explanation that you guys are going to be working on, because that has been a question for the budget committee for several years. And an explanation as to, as Tim mentioned, our previous understanding, because it was always budgeted under the Co-Brown tuition line as an additional thing, that that money should automatically go, so why is there extra? If we can clarify that, so that everybody, including me, can understand that, particularly